Call the meeting to order. It is six thirty on Monday, May the tenth. And this is the Administration and Finance Committee of the whole meeting for the Township of Edersford Cardinal for the one of May. And let me just have a quick look around all the members. The committee are joining me here tonight in the council chambers. And I see that we have Wendy Van Koolen, the District League Community Development Officer. Mike Spencer, the Facilities Manager. Melanie Stubbs, the Treasurer, and Rebecca Williams, the Clerk, joining us by Zoom. And the C A O of the Township, Mr. Dave Grant, is with us here in the council chamber. And I see that our guest, Mr. De Winter, is already present on the Zoom. So I welcome the delegation. We'll hear from you shortly. But I'm going to go through the first few items on the agenda to get the meeting started. So the meeting has been called to order. And the Chair is now looking for a motion to approve the agenda as distributed or as circulated. And I don't have a list, so I'll take Counselor Camp and moving. And this Counselor Cameron have a second, okay? Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding. Motion is on the table. Those in favor? Motion is carried. And I'm moving to item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest here this evening? None declared, and the minutes will so reflect. And I'm moving now then to business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. Now, there didn't seem to be a motion to approve those minutes, but I think that's because it must have been approved at the council meeting. So is there any business arising from these minutes of the meeting of April the twelfth, which has been circulated? And if there is no business arising, I'm going to move on.
Mr. Mayor, was the business about the greater resolve?
It was resolved at a special council meeting at four o'clock this afternoon. And we can give you the details, yeah, a little bit later. Well, partially resolved, let's put it that way. Okay, so no business arising, then I'm going to item number five on the agenda. And item number five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. And the first and only presentation will be from Alantra Leasing, Mr. Marcus De Winter. Now, Mr. Grant, did you want to introduce Mr. De Winter? Or is there anything that, any formalities before he begins his presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I'll maybe have the Community Development Coordinator Wendy Van Koolen give just a brief introduction, as she's done most of the course.
Okay, Wendy, you're up.
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Marcus De Winter reached out to us with an interest in our industrial park lands. So Marcus is the President and General Manager of Alantra Leasing, and he's joined tonight by Erica De Winter. So I'm really pleased to introduce you to Marcus and Erica De Winter. Go ahead, guys.
Okay, good afternoon. And so it's a, Mr., is Marcus De Winter?
Thank you so much for having us here.
Yeah, I missed the name.
Marcus and Erica.
Erica? Okay.
Erica, yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, well, thanks for, thanks for inviting us to your council meeting tonight. And so we have a business that we're growing in Ontario, and we're interested in some winding location in, in southeastern Ontario. We presently have an operation that we're, have established in southwestern Ontario, and businesses is going well for us there. And so we're trying to really look, get a similar type of operation going on the, on the eastern side of Toronto so that we can target, you know, from the west side of Montreal up to Ottawa and to the east side of, east side of Toronto. So our, our, our businesses, our core businesses are building, and we manufacture lease and rent and sell office trailers and of different types of configurations, but mostly to construction sites for job site offices. But we also rent all kinds of facilities like school classrooms, locker room trailers, washroom trailers, and that, that sort of thing. So Erica had put a little presentation package together that she's going to take us through, and as well, pass it over to Erica.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't know who I need to take the screen from, but maybe I can just share my screen. Okay. You can let me know if everybody can see my screen?
Yes, we can. Now, just so you know, what, what we're seeing, okay, there we go. We've got a split.
Do you see the presentation now? And everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, then I'll take it from here. So as you know, we are Alantra Leasing. And so who is Alantra? So we've been operational since nineteen eighty-one, so forty years in business. And we, just a moment, yeah, so we are a manufacturer of office trailers, custom modular buildings, and prefabricated wall floor panels. We also have a full service department, and we also have our own transportation services as well. We have been growing and are now serving into eastern Canada. We have twelve distribution and maintenance outlets across the eastern provinces. So, so our locations include, in Newfoundland and Labrador, our Jentia, Deer Lake, Goose Bay, Wabush. In Quebec, we have Matapedia and recently Val-a-Laine. And New Brunswick, Woodstock, and Sussex is our primary manufacturing plant. In Prince Edward Island, we're located in Kensington. And Nova Scotia, Elmsdale, and North Sydney, and one of our newest there as well, in Ontario, London. And as Marcus mentioned previously, we're searching for a new location in southeastern Ontario. So we have three primary divisions at Alantra. Marcus touched on them briefly. So we have our rental fleet, our panels, and our modular divisions. So under our rentals, we have eleven hundred and twenty-three office trailers. And the plus sign is there to indicate that we're building constantly. So every week, we're putting new office trailers into the shop to add on to our fleet. So we're building on demand. We have a lot of customers that are calling with a need of our products. And the market is experiencing a high demand in the products right now. So we have a very unique scenario where we're able to build on the demand of the market due to our manufacturing plant. And where we're consistently building every week, we're able to add any demands to that list and get them into our shop for the customers. In that rental fleet, we also do custom designs and builds. We have an in-house design department that can, customers can work with us directly on. So that is anything between redesigning a floor plan to changing the siding of the unit to, to match their business. Under our panels, we are doing floor and wall panels. And this is a really unique process that helps speed along construction schedules. And so we do this with hotels, apartments, offices, cottages, and even housing. And the same goes for modular, another really unique building process that allows construction product, projects to get out of our shop and up quicker than a traditional build. So again, we're doing this with hotels, apartments, office complexes, cottages, and even houses in some scenarios. So I'm going to go into a little more detail about these. Marcus touched on the type of trailers we have. You can see here a few different floor plans on these sheets. So these are floor plans of our office trailers, lunchroom trailers, locker rooms, self-contained washroom trailers, which are really unique products. You know, they're a washroom that comes portable with the septic and water tanks housed right inside the unit, very popular. So then we also have our sea containers or shipping containers, heated portable storages, mining wellsite trailers. I also like to call them our two-man bunkhouses. We have other related bunkhouse trailers, you know, five units, six units. And then we have our custom purpose trailers as well. So I included a couple photos at the bottom of some projects we've done in the past. So those are two very different, unique projects. One was a complete custom office trailer that we did, and another one was a custom project where they wanted stairs to the roof. Including in the, included in the custom purchase trailers, we also do non-combustible units, meaning we use metal steel studs opposed to wood studs and making those units flame resistant. So here are a few past projects that we've done. I touched on it briefly before. We, again, apartments, hotels, cottages, houses. So in the images below, we can see a transport truck leaving our Sussex yard, going to P E I with some floor panels. The middle image is of a home. This was a home that was done in Sussex. It was, I believe it was a three-day frame. They had it up in no time at all. And then the far right bottom image is of a recent apartment build. We did a five-story apartment building. So I have a quick video to share with you on panelized solutions. So can everybody still see my screen, okay?
Yeah. We lost your voice.
Okay. Oh, can you hear me, okay?
Not back.
Okay, good, good. Can you see my screen still?
Yes.
All right. Time lapse that we had done on our last apartment build. Are you not seeing a video? Sorry?
No.
Oh, goodness, you're just hearing music then, are you?
Yes.
All right, let me see here. Okay, let's see. Can you see my screen now, YouTube?
But it's still got panelized solutions on it.
There we go.
You can see me now? Okay, so let's see, okay. All right, we good? You can see everything?
Yes.
Okay, let's try again. All right, so that was just a time lapse video we had done of our project in, one of our apartment projects in P E I. It was a really great build, and we had a lot of fun putting that video together. So next, I want to talk a little bit about our modular buildings. So modular building is becoming a very popular building solution. So the great thing about modular, it is known for keeping construction projects on time and on budget. It keeps projects out of the elements. So you can see our shop here in Sussex, and the image below is stage one. Can you still, can you see my screen again, or did I lose you? Let's see here.
The video screen is there in the blank.
Yeah, let's see here. Oh, goodness.
Custom modular buildings.
Oh, there we go. Okay. There we go. Now you can see what I'm talking about. So yeah, so again, it just keeps projects out of the elements. So you can see in the stage one, in the bottom left-hand corner, that's our manufacturing shop in Sussex. So the stages below represent a recent, our most recent modular build we have done. And it shows the stages of a four-story hotel being built modularly. The other advantage of modular buildings, it helps to limit waste. It speeds up construction schedules, as mentioned. So this project went in the shop in October, and we had it completed by the end of March. While the site work was being completed, we were able to build the units in our shop to line up very nicely with, with the construction site. So it helps speed everything right along, and these units were built in the dead of winter. So it, it was quick and very efficient, and everyone's very happy with it. So the other advantage of modular, it fits so many variations of construction projects. You know, we do hotels, apartments, office complexes, camps, housing, cottages. It's a unique product that can be expanded on to, relocated in certain instances, not so much a hotel. And it can be added on to existing buildings. So I'll take you through the stages here and then show you another quick video. So in the stage one, you can see the modulars being framed up in the, in our shop. So this is where the, they would get their floors, walls, and framed up. They'd get wrapped in with the electrical and plumbing, drywalled and crack filled painted. The next stage is when the hotel actually came in, and they were able to put all of their furniture, carpeting, vanities, mirrors, pictures, everything in those rooms prior to going on site. This is a huge time-saving solution for hotels. So having these units, being able to be pretty well ready to sell even prior to having the hotel put together.
Losing.
Stage three.
Losing.
Pardon? You're losing the sound. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. I think we have a connection, connection issue, okay? So then in stage three, we have our products, once they're all finished with the interior, putting everything together. They are then wrapped and ready for shipment to onsite. And stage four, you can see the, there's a modular being lifted onto the fourth floor. And so that's the fourth and final floor of this project. And we don't have a video of this one quite yet, but we do have one from a project we completed last year. It was a hotel expansion. So I'll share my screen for that one as well. Just bear with me here. All right, I believe your screen changed there. All right.
That was, that was crazy. Still there?
I think we're just, there we go. And so that was that one, and did you want to? Okay, so this is just a screen of past projects we've done. So this is in the far left corner. This is a remote camp we did for, for a fishing camp in Grammernan Island. These units were shipped by ferry. And then we have a custom office trailer. And in the far right-hand corner, over here, this is a non-combustible unit that was being framed up using metal studs. And then we have an example on the bottom of a modular office complex that is, can be permanent or relocatable. So we just wanted to share a few different projects and share what those might look like. And finally, our proposed project.
Yes, so that, the picture on the left is the, it's a ten thousand square foot facility that we're currently building in our London, at our London location. And the picture, so that one, it's eighty by one twenty-five, ten thousand square feet. And then the picture on the right is actually the inside view of another shop that we just finished in Prince Edward, Prince Edward Island. But the one, what we would be planning for, for your area there would be the ten thousand square foot facility. And it would be, you know, designed so initially to accommodate our office trailer business and with the hopes of, you know, expanding into the wall and floor panel business there as well.
So thank you for your time, and is there any questions for us today?
Well, I guess our first question is, that tells us a little bit about who you are and that you've been in business for forty years is commendable. That's a long time to be in business and remain in business. And so now you might want to tell us what your interest is.
Well, we're, again, we're looking for a location to, to set up in, in your area. And one thing about our business is it takes, it takes a fairly large parcel land to accommodate all the different types of office trailers that we have. And they, you know, the, the space requirements fluctuate from, you know, throughout the year. In the wintertime, we have a lot of units that come back off a construction site. So we need to store them and maintain them and get them ready for the upcoming year. So that's one of our interests in your, you know, we have, we're interested in the John, your parcel land that you have in the, in your Johnstown industrial park, because I think you had six and a half acres. And then there's another parcel there for another acre and a half. So that's typically about the size of property we like to have for our operations.
So I, I'm just going to jump in here if I can. So we, we just have the six and a half acres running on County Road Two. You referred to another smaller parcel. Where's that?
I, I, I understand it's adjacent to the six and a half acre. I haven't seen it myself, but just from the information I've seen, there's a six and a half acre parcel and an acre and one and a half acre parcel.
So Wendy, or through the C A O, is that the parcel that Purple Farm says right now?
No, I think the part they're referring to would be at the corner of Giant Tiger Boulevard in Newport.
Okay, that's the parcel that's got the, the archaeological impairment on it. So you're right, there is a parcel there that's about an acre and a half. But it's got an archaeological impairment on it that we're obligated at some point or another to either do a phase two or phase three archaeological study on it or alternatively to, to isolate it. And right now, we've isolated it. We're obligated at some point to fence it. So anyway, let's assume that that whole acre and a half was available. So you'd be looking at six plus one and a half acres. That's only seven and a half acres. Is that, it seems kind of small for what you're proposing here. Ten thousand square foot manufacturing facility plus storage.
You mean the, the, the land is, is small for what we're proposing?
Well, that's what I'm asking you. Is it, is it?
Well, it, it, it would, like even a six, like in London, for example, we got, we have a nine acre parcel there. So, you know, we have other locations where, you know, we're working with six acres. So, you know, even if, if they're, if they're wanting that, the acre and a half parcel was, you know, not available due to the restrictions on it, then, you know, we would still probably be interested in the, in the six and a half acre parcel.
Okay, what, what is your timeline here?
We're pretty well, we've been kind of searching in the area for the last year or so. And so we're, we're pretty well ready to move ahead at, you know, as soon as we can find, find a property.
Now, your, 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 your project in London, is that under construction now?
Sorry, you cut out there.
Sorry, we lost you for a sec.
All right, I'm just interested in where the, where the London project is. At what stage is the London project?
Well, that one there, the, the building is, we've actually been operating there for about three years now. And we initially rented some space. And so that building there should be completed probably, you know, within a couple months. So that would be eighty percent complete probably right now.
And that was the one that you showed us there on the slide called new proposed facility? That's ten thousand, that's ten thousand square feet?
Yes, it was, yeah.
These are, these are, are these engineered buildings, are they? Hello? Hello?
I'm sorry. Hi.
The London, that's a pre-engineered building?
Yeah, yeah, yes, it is, yes.
So you're saying that it's eighty?
It's made by, the builder was manufactured by Steelway, actually, in, in Ontario there.
Okay.
Elmer, Ontario, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are just a few of the questions that I had. What, I was trying to find the, we looked up to try to get some background on your company. I was just trying to get an address for the London facility. Couldn't find an address for it. an address for the London facility. Couldn't find an address for her.
Yeah, well, it's actually in, uh, it's on the, uh, Donnybrook Road and it's actually in Dorchester.
It's in Dorchester. Yeah, yeah.
Adjacent, adjacent to, uh, adjacent to London, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's under, uh, just the, yeah.
Okay, so it wouldn't be?
It's on our website. Pardon?
I was looking in Sydney of London.
I think, uh, when we.
No, it's in, uh, yeah, I think it's in, uh, Fame Center, the municipality of Fame Center. It's, uh, one eighty-one Donnybrook Road in Dorchester.
Yes. So we were renting a place in London and, uh, we still refer to it as our London Yard, but our new construction going up the, the new building is in Dorchester.
Okay, then, and what did you say again?
That's probably where the confusion came from. Yeah.
Marcus, what was the, what was the municipality?
Uh, the municipality of Fame Center.
Sorry, sorry, I lost the sound there.
And the municipality of Fame Center?
Plains Center.
Thames, T H A M E S.
Oh, Thames, T H A M.
Thames, T H A M E S.
Yeah, center. Oh, okay. All right, that's why I couldn't find you in London. Okay, all right, well, um, what, what's, what, how do you want to proceed here? I, I suppose that staff has told you that the, that the six acre parcel, we took that off the market a few, uh, months ago, uh, mainly because we had some other, uh, some other project that we were working on and we wanted to give that project to move ahead a little bit further. Because it's going to lead to a lot of development in the local area if it comes to pass. And, uh, we were hoping to hold this land for, uh, just the right, just the right tenant. Have you discussed with staff the pricing that we're asking and that kind of thing?
Uh, no, not yet, no.
Okay, so I guess it's, uh, have you actually walked this land? Have you seen this land?
I haven't myself, but we have, uh, we have a gentleman who, uh, is working for us there and from Prescott. So he, he has, he has, uh, drove down by the site and taken pictures and, and sent us pictures of it.
Okay, where are you calling us from, by the way? Just, I haven't got that clear yet.
Uh, we're calling from Sussex, New Brunswick.
Oh, you're calling from Sussex, okay.
Yes.
And who is it? Who's the person that you work with in Prescott? Sorry, I lost the.
Pardon?
Uh, I'm sorry.
What was the question?
The question was, who is the agent that?
Doug, Doug, uh, Doug Thompson is, is a gentleman that we're working with in, uh, in Prescott. He lives in Prescott.
Doug Thompson. Is he the agent, the real estate agent?
Yes, he's an agent for us here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Cause, uh, we had a, uh, we had a press release from Prescott, um, that was issued back in, uh, I haven't got the date on it here, but it looked like it, it said, uh, the town of Prescott has announced that municipal lands at Development Drive have been sold to a land for leasing. So that must have been a premature announcement, was it?
Well, what, what happened there is we, we were, uh, you know, we were entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the, that property. And there, when it came, uh, time to, uh, investigate the soil as part of the purchase sale agreement, the, the, the land was, was basically the soil conditions were such that it wasn't buildable. So that, that purchase is kind of, uh, is become, you know, questionable, I guess, depending on, on, you know, if they're able to, they have an engineer, uh, an engineering company doing reports on it, doing a study on it, geotechnical study. So, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of questionable at this time whether that property is developable or not. And so at the same time, we're, you know, uh, you know, starting to look for other options. So we can, you know, get their, get moving forward, I guess, with our, uh, with our expansion.
Okay, I see your, okay. And that property was north of the four oh one, eh? You need, do you need, uh, do you need water and?
Yeah.
Do you need water and sewer services in this facility?
Uh, no, we can operate with, uh, like, uh, well and septic, you know, well and septic system if it's not available, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions for, uh, Mr. DeWitt here?
Would, would this project be bringing new jobs, uh, to the area or would you have existing staff moving from somewhere else?
Yeah. Uh, no, we would be, uh, you know, probably looking at hiring about, uh, once we get up and running, probably, you know, half a dozen people.
Right. Very good.
To start with. And then, uh, depending on, on, you know, it would kind of grow from there if we, uh, if we expand into the, uh, the wall and floor panel business.
So would they be like construction type jobs, like carpenters and that sort of thing? Pad operators and design?
No, they would be like, uh, like truck drivers, uh, uh, car- carpenters, maintenance people. You know, doing plumbing work, uh,
Labor.
Laborers, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor wanted a question here.
Yeah, I, first I wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, for the presentation. Um, my, my question is, like, if you were to purchase this, um, and, and close the sale, when, when would you expect the sewners to have shovels in the ground?
Well, it, I guess a lot of it kind of depends on, uh, you know, finding a contractor, you know, getting, uh, getting the building designed. I guess we, we pretty well know what we want for a building, but, uh, but it's, you know, doing the, uh, the having the, the, the property site, uh, having the grading plan done. And, uh, you know, getting, uh, building permit put in place and that sort of thing there. So, and even now, I know there's a, quite a backlog. And if we ordered an, uh, a, a pre-engineered building, again, there's, there's a, there's a pretty good backlog on those right now. So my anticipation, you know, my best guess would be that, you know, if we could move forward with a property purchase, we'd probably looking at, uh, starting construction in the spring, I would guess. I think that'd be the spring of, uh, the spring of twenty-two.
Yeah, sure, follow up. So, so are we a contingency plan to your plans in Prescott?
Hello?
Yeah, sorry, the connection is that great. So we're, we're in it.
I, uh, it's the deputy mayor again. I, I just asked if, if the, the, the land purchase in Edwardsburg Cardinal would be a contingency plan only for your purchase in, in Prescott.
The screen is frozen again. It looks like internet problems again.
Sorry, did you hear me that time?
No, could you, could you, Greg? Could you please repeat that?
Yeah, I just, I asked if your land purchase here in Edwardsburg Cardinal was, was a contingency plan, uh, for your purchase in Prescott.
Well, we're, we're, like I just, uh, actually, right now that, that purchase in, uh, Prescott, it's really unknown whether that's going to be able to move forward. So, uh, you know, we're, and if it couldn't move forward, we don't know when. So, you know, if it's not going to meet with our, timeframe, I guess, which is, you know, we want to move forward pretty quickly here, then if it's not going to, uh, if it's not going to meet our, our timeframe, then we're going to opt out of that deal and, and, and purchase another, an alternate site. So this, this is why we're kind of checking in with, uh, uh, with your municipality to see if, you know, if that property would be an option for us.
Other questions here?
I decided that one pretty much is what he answered. He's been staring twenty twenty. When would it be completed?
Uh, if we started it in the spring, it would probably be, uh, done in the fall of, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, uh, well, again, all, all, I, I don't see anybody else putting their hands up for questioning. Uh, I want to thank you for the presentation as well, uh, and, uh, also, uh, for the introductions. Quite impressed with the, as I said before, with the background of your company. Um, I would, uh, before this would go much farther, I look forward to an opportunity to meeting with you kind of face to face. When I'm doing business with somebody, I kind of like to look them in the eye. Uh, and Marcus, I'm, I'm going to be frank with you about something here. One of the big worries that we have here in Edwardsburg Cardinal is, um, uh, buyers that, that are interested in buying what little bits of land that we have available and, and speculating them to, into the future. And we have a bad example of that going on right across the street from the piece of property that you're looking at, uh, which was a piece of municipal land that was sold quite a number of years ago. And, uh, you know, the, the speculator is, uh, is, is just holding on, waiting for about ten times as the original purchase price. So, uh, we like to know that the people that we're dealing with are, are solid and that they have the, uh, financial bona fides to go ahead and also that they have the, the business plan, which is, um, immediate. Uh, and, and, and going forward. So, uh, I'm kind of hoping that at some point, uh, you might make a, a visit down this way. And, uh, I know probably in the meantime, you'll be talking to our staff to finalize any kind of proposal that you want to bring forward. But I would invite you to, if you are serious about this piece of property, I would inform you, I would invite you to be, bring a proposal forward to the staff. Uh, the staff will kind of feel out counsel for you and give you an idea of where things are. Uh, one thing I just wanted to close the loop on was the, the two pieces of property that you're looking at, the six acre and the one point five acre, you realize that they are separated by a developed piece of property in between them. And also, uh, I'm hoping that you realize that neither piece of property has been cleared. Both of them have full, uh, tree cover on them and both of them would have to be cleared. The one and a half acre piece of property, even if you cleared it, there would be a, a small piece. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what the size, but let's say twenty by twenty. Uh, someplace in the middle of that piece of property that we would have to fence off or sterilize, uh, in some manner. But that's, that's not, I don't think that's a major problem if you were just going to use that piece of land for storage. So anyway, I would invite you to continue working with the staff and, uh, see how your plans develop. And, uh, at some point, if you wanted to proceed to, to bring forward a proposal, that council could, uh, respond to, uh, is there anything else that we can answer for you at this point?
Uh, no, I think you, yeah, you've, uh, covered all our, uh, any questions that we had for now. So, and, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, look forward to, uh, making a trip down here right now with, uh, the Brunswick has some strict, uh, COVID rules. So if we leave, we got, we leave the province, we got to quarantine for a couple of weeks when we come back. So, but, uh, once that's over, we'll be a little more mobile.
Right.
Now, this too shall end. We hope, um, okay. So again, thank you very much for your presentation and, uh, wish you good luck, uh, with the staff and to find them. Uh, I think they'll find them very congenial and quick to work with. And, uh, we're looking forward to, to hearing from you again at some point in the future. And, uh, if there's anything else we can do for you, please feel free to give us a call. And, uh, we'll get back to you as quickly as we can.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right. And so I'll bid you adieu and we're going to.
Good evening.
And by the way.
Thanks so much for your time, everyone.
If you're more than welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting. If, if that, if that happens to be your event. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda now, council, uh, you can pretty much see where that last presentation left us. And, uh, so, I mean, at some point, we may be asked to make a decision about that six acre piece, piece of property. And we can discuss that, uh, more when we get into, uh, the appropriate post session. All right. So on that item number six, which is the, uh, discussion item on the Eorn Gage Project. And I'm not going to say a lot about that. I think a little bit long, uh, later here. No, it's not actually on the agenda. Was, was the letter circulated in the package? Or I think it was, wasn't it? Yes.
What, what letter?
Okay, so that's the next item on the agenda. Yeah, it's on page eighteen and nineteen and twenty. And, uh, I'll, I'll just give you a bit of background to this one. And that is that, uh, last, uh, Monday, I think it was, uh, the Eorn Group called a meeting of all the mayors in Eastern Ontario. There was, I think, a hundred and ten mayors invited, about seventy-five or eight had showed up on Zoom call to get an update on this gig project. They call it gig down, gig up, a thousand megabytes down, a thousand megabytes up. Uh, that's the essence of the project that Eorn has scoped out and, uh, and developed a, a, a kind of a rudimentary class D level budget for. And, uh, the essence of the ask comes in the, uh, the letter that you see in front of you. And I'm going down to, let's see, the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas clause. And the sixth whereas clause, the six, seven, and eight, put the nub on the issue. The federal and the provincial governments have committed almost seven billion dollars towards broadband improvement in the province of Ontario. Eorn is seeking two hundred million from the federal and the provincial governments to support a one point two billion dollar public private partnership gig project, which represents just five point seven percent of all the federal provincial and provincial funding available and would provide more households, businesses, organizations in our township with reliable internet for digital opportunities, education, public safety, et cetera. And we have in Eastern Ontario approximately thirty percent of all the underserved or unserved households in Ontario that currently cannot receive even the fifty megabits down, ten megabits up standard. So what Eorn is proposing is that the federal provincial governments fund a gig up, gig down project. And forget about this, this aspirational move to fifty-ten. Because it would just really be money wasted for a short period of time. And that's the essence of the, of the letter here. And as a result of the meeting last Monday, the concept was that all, all municipalities in Eastern Ontario would be asked to. all, all municipalities in Eastern Ontario would be asked to, to support this project. That's the letter that you have in front of you now. Uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, open for discussion, it's a draft. And, uh, I will, as a mayor, be signing a letter that's being addressed to Minister Monsef and Minister Scott. These are the, these, these are the two ministers, the federal and the provincial minister, who don't seem to be able to get their two pro, programs to max in order to be fun, able to fund the, the EORN project. So floor is open for discussion here and I, what, I, I will turn to the, to the C A O and ask, is it, is it the intention then that this would go to the council as a recommendation from this committee at the end of the month? And the resolution would be passed at the end of the month?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll just have the, uh, the question to that, just to confirm.
So Rebecca?
Can you hear me? My, uh, connection's a little wonky right now.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, yes, so I drafted the, uh, draft resolution motion that you see in front of you. Um, it can be brought forward to the council meeting at the end of May for final approval. Um, you can either bring forward a short motion tonight, uh, just to recommend that it be brought forward. But as it is right now, just as a discussion item is sufficient as well. Either way, I'll put it on the council agenda.
Any discussion here?
Well, hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, the federal money is Canada-wide money under the universal broadband fund. And, um, I don't wanna get into a lot of detail. I got all kinds of information that other people don't have access to, that's the contacts that I have. And I have some concerns about the wording. Uh, I support the quest for money. I have some concerns about the wording of, um, of the resolution because some of it's just not true. And I, I commend EORN for marketing their brand, okay? They did a great project, uh, back a few years ago with broadband. They're taking on a cell gap project now. So I hope that they can work a, an arrangement. The private, the public-private partnership gig project. Part of the, um, it's my understanding that they didn't, um, they didn't apply for money under the ICON project. The project closed and they didn't make a submission. And I'm not certain that they made a submission, a proper submission, even under the U B F funding program. And if they didn't, they're at odds with the federal government. There's a couple of newspaper articles that have been, are available, uh, whereby, I think Recorder and Times had one back in, uh, early part of the year where they had made up. But the federal, federal government said, if you want money, you come to the project to, to the funding project with the proper submissions. You don't go and say, we need money. And I think they did that, you see, with the first project that they did in fourteen. The, the money was only, it was better for the municipalities to get the money. In fact, that, that was an infrastructure program. And what happened was the money was, the criteria were that municipalities had to be involved. I S Ps could not be involved. And as a result, EORN was formed and they went through the process of a P-three type concept. And it worked very well. They got enough money at the end of the deal to keep funding themselves for the next few years. But, um, but both the U B F and the ICON program allow I S Ps to go for money. And they're all applying.
Yep.
So, EORN is gonna be competing with Bell Canada and Rogers and whoever else wants to tell us. Oh, whoever else wants to get the money. So, it's highly unlikely that Bell's gonna sidle up the E O R N instead of Rogers and say, let's partner up on this because they're gonna siphon off some of the funds.
Yeah, it's, can I jump in here a little? And they real, EORN realizes this, but the problem is on these ICON submissions, they're all, uh, municipally based. And so what tends to happen is that the, and we didn't apply, we, we supported Bell's application for ICON. And we also supported Rogers' application for ICON, but we realized that that's what we're gonna do, not even our whole township.
Project was, we, we thought, yeah, a few months ago, thirty grand into the pod.
Well, we didn't actually.
We didn't pay it, but it's promised.
But, but again, those are all sort of small regional projects that are limited in their geography. And so what's gonna end up happening with this ICON project, uh, ICON fund if it goes ahead? And none of them have been approved at this point.
Oh, I know.
What, what's gonna happen is you're gonna end up with a whole patchwork of small little projects all across Eastern Ontario aimed at fifty-ten.
Sorry to interrupt you. I can get fifty-ten from two suppliers tomorrow.
Okay, but there ain't, that's where ICON is aimed, is to get the majority, uh, get the projects up to fifty-ten.
That's where the federal government is, the criteria that they established, that's every Canadian should have access.
That's right, and that's the object. So, but the, but the point is, the, the patchwork that's gonna be created about Eastern Ontario, it's gonna leave big chunks of the rural area without any service, not without any service, without an improvement of service. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Well, that's simply, that's economics. It's an economics issue.
And, and that's again, the EORN model is supposed to jump in where there's been what they call market failure. The market has failed to deliver the service. The EORN concept is supposed to, uh, deliver the service where the market fails.
It's never gonna work. That model will never work.
Well, the only problem is, it, first of all, we were able to establish the, the fiber background backbone for all of Eastern Ontario. That was the, that was all, that was the first project. The second project was the cell power project, which got a good chunk of, uh, Eastern Ontario. And I'm, I'm saying everything from the Quebec border to, to Kowartha Lakes. That cellphone project got the majority of that, but there are still many cellphone gaps. Now, the third project is to address those cellphone gaps. And they partnered with Ru, with Rogers to do that, and that project is rolling out right now. But that doesn't improve internet or broadband.
Cellphone is different from broadband.
Oh, absolutely.
You gotta keep those two separate.
Yeah.
Okay? And cellphone, the whole cellphone network system was designed for short duration. One, one gig, uh, Hertz is gonna be, um, you're, you're looking at long-duration transmissions of data. You know, cellphone was designed, uh, the networks, I'm talking network design. And that's just a forte of mine. I did fifteen years of that stuff when I was with Bell. Cellphone networks were designed that you would have short conversation.
Yeah, I know, but they're people used.
And small amounts of data.
Yep.
You'll never get a one gig on a cellphone.
Well, the, the problem that we're facing now is though that, is that in Eastern Ontario, people are using their tablets for much more than short-term conversation. They're using their tablets for multi-multi-use.
Yes, but they're not built for that.
No, but that's, the demand is in the marketplace. Anyway, 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 look, I don't wanna get into a long discussion here. If there are, if there are areas in here that are incorrect, we wanna get them corrected.
Well, that's the point that, that, you know, first of all, like, we're putting our wherashes in here, which is repetition of the stuff that EORN is probably, I recognize that.
Yeah.
Some of that information is not correct.
Okay, so we got, uh, and we want this.
I hope you should reword it because, you know, who knows what, uh, where this is gonna go and so. The other thing on the funding, you know, that Northumberland County has, has gone directly, they're, they're not going with EORN. They've gone directly to get funding for themselves.
Yeah, they probably have, and we have.
There's been others as well that have done that.
Well, I mean, uh, all I can say is that all the wardens and all the mayors were there and they're all committed on the phone, on the, on the conference call. Anyway, so look, the, the point is that there are errors in this to be corrected. And I, we certainly want them to be correct when the motion finally comes forward. If, if this committee is not prepared to recommend that this go forward in its present form, uh, that, then that's fine. Uh, we, we can have it corrected and changed and, and re-authored in many different ways. It's, it's just a working document. Uh, and you're absolutely correct. It, it is based on the EORN talking points and the, uh, and the letter to the two ministers that follows it. It's, it's all based on, on that information. So if there's any corrections.
I would suggest you take the technical stuff out of there and just simply say, we support EORN's, efforts or whatever you wanna call it, to, uh, execute this project.
I, can I go? I, 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 um, not all of what Jack kept, um, saying, but I, but I certainly have taken out the two hundred million and a lot of the, the technical specifications and just, just keeping it, uh, simple. And I actually send one through, um, that, that's very, very simple. It, it takes all of that. All of that out and it just addresses, you know, the need to, uh, modern, uh, high-speed broadband that we support the E O R N getting to, to one gig that'll serve our residences as, and businesses long into the future. Um, and, and it shortens down the resolution a lot and, and still says everything can be, yeah, it, it can be simplified.
Okay, so we can get another draft of that?
Yeah, sure. I can send it, I can send it.
Just clean out that.
Okay, now that's no problem. Okay.
And one gig's gonna cost, right? Two hundred bucks a month minimum.
Okay, so about.
Fifty gig, fifty-ten right now, a hundred bucks a month.
Well, I, I don't know pricing at all. I gotta admit that. I have no idea.
Well, I, I, I checked it out yesterday.
Yeah, but again, that's market failure. Market won't pay that. They won't pay a hundred dollars a month, that's for sure. But that's market failure because the market, uh, the market is not large enough to support the capital costs that put these things into effect. It's the same with natural gas and that's why we have.
Sixty percent of Eastern Ontario's got coverage right now. Fifty-ten.
Okay, but that leaves forty percent that doesn't.
That's right.
The same forty percent that doesn't have natural gas.
Okay, but I spoke to a company this, uh, this is Monday, on Saturday, I spoke to a company. They're upgrading all of their sites in Eastern Ontario. They're exactly all of Ontario to fifty-ten because they've got the word from the government that that's what the expectation is from a government point of view. So they're in the process. They've got infrastructure there already. They're not building new infrastructure. You go up the tower and you put on some more different, uh, equipment in the shack down below and then antennas on the tower.
Yep.
And so that's what they, I just upgraded mine in twenty-five, a week, a month ago. And the fifty-ten is, they got a deal on right now, but after the deal's off, it's going to a hundred, a hundred, uh, a month for fifty-ten.
Okay.
So, and that gives them the R O R that they're looking for. And it's all based on that, as you know, you've been in business long enough, that the, the, these companies who are providing the service, there will be self-areas in Eastern Ontario that will never have coverage.
Yeah, that's true.
And the reason is because the economics won't work.
Yeah. Okay, so.
That's only my own point. So it's wishful thinking. We go along and think, oh, we're gonna get all this wonderful stuff, you know? And I'm gonna, would I take one gig a bit? What would I use it for?
Well, the, the point is, none of us know what's gonna be five years from now.
If I was running a, a farm operation with a million dollars worth of equipment and so on, I might need that because of the business type thing I'm into. But as a resident, you know, family, like, one gig is, like, crazy.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, one gig, we wouldn't have had this mess tonight.
Fifty-ten, you wouldn't have had this mess tonight.
Probably not.
I just checked my speed. I was getting ten, uh, megabytes right here on my cellphone.
Okay, okay.
I don't know where it is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see another ver, version of this when it finally gets to the council meeting. I think that's what it announced. Yeah.
And is, is, is M P Barrick really honorable, M P Barrick?
No, no.
Um, it's honorable here.
Where's that?
I mean, I like Michael and everything, but I don't know.
Where, where's that? I should find that.
Nineteen.
Hey?
Nine, page nineteen.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, those, those are, okay, well, that's easier.
Yeah, those are easy.
That's, that's why we put this on this agenda.
Good idea.
Yeah, you know, okay, so I'm moving on here. And I'm going to, the next item on the agenda, which is seven A, which is the vacant and abandoned building status update report. And so those, that's the report that's on page twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And so there's a briefing, slick, a short briefing note, uh, that, that, uh, precedes the, uh, the actual report itself. And the report's on the floor for discussion. And let me just have a look. There's no recommendation with the report, so it's just a discussion. So, councillor Cameron?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the C A O. I, I've read the briefing note, uh, and I, it, it strikes me a little bit strange, the last paragraph, we have seen a high volume of building activity, blah, 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 uh, regarding, uh, focus to this secondary duty. I was always under the impression when we were discussing the abandoned and, and vacant buildings, uh, properties, buildings, that it was gonna be a joint situation between the C B O, the bylaw officer, and the fire department. Um, that, that, that was, and now, what I'm taking from this, uh, briefing note is that it's all left up to the C B O. I think the C B O should be the, perhaps maybe the lead on it, but he should be delegating some, some, some work, uh, on these. Uh, just, just my, just my comment. Um, so there's no, there's no recommendation. But we've got five, we've got five closed cases out of what's, what's there. And, uh, well, anyway, it's been, it's been about a year, I guess, uh, going, going forward, but, uh, but if I could just get a little bit of clarification on that?
Certainly, yeah, through, through, through the, through the chair, uh, yeah, pri, primarily, i, it, it falls to the, uh, to, to the C B O. Um, but, uh, um, certainly, I think that we can all be, um, cognizant that in, in the last twelve months, our building department has been extremely, uh, active and this has fallen through the cracks a little bit and, uh.
Still doing a good job.
Well, I think we, I, I think we've made some progress on, 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 on a couple of areas and, uh, you know.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly progress there, yes.
Yeah, but, uh, yes, so, uh, it's been predominantly through the, uh, through, through the C B O.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion here? This is kind of the first time we've had a sort of comprehensive look at this. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'm moving on.
I think the only thing that I, that I would add to it is that it identifies that the, uh, you know, that there is a, is a lot of time spent, uh, on one, one, you know, one, uh, aspect. And, you know, I think it goes to the argument that, you know, we could have somebody there for more hours than what they're already doing.
Uh, in other words, it, a lot of effort here.
Oh, yeah, for the, what is it? Uh, I know a C B O is full-time, but the bylaw enforcement officer is ten hours a week and, and certainly could be doing, you know, far more, I think.
Okay, but again, does it come down to more time from the building inspector? Okay, but again, does it come down to more time from the building inspector? Chief Building Official, or more time from the bylaw officer? Which is.
Or fire chief.
Or fire chief, yeah.
Fair enough. No, fair enough, fair enough.
So what are the learnings from the staff? What, I mean, what recommendations are staff making here?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, I don't, I, I don't have any recommendations at this particular time, but, uh, certainly, uh, assessing. Uh, because I'm, I'm not anticipating that the, um. Uh, building permits are going to decrease anytime soon, so, uh, we, we, we may have to look at some alternative methods. I just haven't got to that, that particular stage yet.
Okay, no further discussion, I'm moving on, and the next item is seven B, which is the township surplus. And there is a briefing paper here, and, uh, there's a recommendation on page thirty. Uh, Chair's looking for a, a mover and a seconder to action, the recommendation. Okay, Mr. Bradley, does he have a seconder?
I'll second.
Mr. Robertson. And what we're basically doing is allocating, uh, this. Allocating the surplus, is there any discussion on the recommendation that's on the floor? Or not, if there's no discussion, I'm about to call a question, those in favor of the resolution, motion is carried. And then I'm moving to item number seven C, which is the Public Sector Accounting Board Budget Addendum. So there is a backgrounder here, uh, but just to brief it, just to put a brief thing to it. Uh, we, we, we budget on a cash basis, but the Public Sector Accounting Board requires that we. Uh, also present, uh, uh. On, on an asset management basis, so, uh, the intent of the, uh. Of the resolution and the summary that you see on page thirty-two is to change our, uh, budget, not, not change it, but. To present our budget, which has already been approved, presented in a different format. So that it, it satisfies the requirement of the Public Sector Accounting Board. So there is a recommendation on page thirty-two, Chair's looking for discussion or activity and direction. Uh, so, is that councillor Hunter?
Yeah.
Are you moving it?
I'll second that.
Councillor Hunter is moving it, and councillor Cameron is seconding it. Is there any further discussion on this recommendation? Hearing none, about to call a question.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Staff can answer, like, when we, we pub, do we publish this, um?
Yep.
PSAB, uh, so. When we seek grant money, et cetera, do they look at this one, or do they look at the one that is the produced by us?
I suspect that they look at our financial, FIR, Financial Information Return, uh, rather than at our budgets.
Okay.
Which is P, PSAB.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's that?
Which is the Public Service of Town.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want, I can have the treasurer.
Yeah.
Certainly, for, through the chair, the grants never are, the PSAB addendum is really more of an audit, um, report that the auditors look at. In the development of, uh, and, and review of our, our financials. So they use our addendum as, as the means to kind of reconcile, um, our budget to a PSAB version of a, of a budget. Um, so it's not really published outside, other than through the council, um, meeting here and then received at council at the end of the month. Um, but in terms of grants, yeah, financial return and our financial statements are, are the things with, that, um, the province would look at. Um, we have financial indicators, uh, through our financial return that, that tell the province, uh, what the financial stability of the, of the town is. And, and where we need our money.
It's done under the PSAB format.
Uh, the financial return is still PSAB, uh, in format that way, because it, it actually replicates the, uh, statement. The financial, annual financial statement, but it's just done in an Excel spreadsheet format with, um. With basically a little more detail to the, to the financial statements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions here? Okay, I'm about to call a question on the recommendation, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And then the last item on the agenda is the purchase of a new phone system. And like all phone systems, it looks like this one has come to its end, and, uh. And so there's a recommendation here on page thirty-four, thirty-nine, last paragraph of the briefing note. Forers looking for discussion, looking for direction. Is this, you're moving the recommendation?
I am.
Councillor Cameron moving, Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding, is there any discussion here?
Maybe I gotta ask the CIO if, uh, this pro, uh, this system, as outlined in the attachment. Is meeting all your needs? And with a view to, you know, some. Flow into the future, that type of thing.
Yeah, through, through, through the chair, I'll have the, uh, manager of Parks Recreation Facility speak to that.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. CIO, yes, uh, the technology in, in the phone system is state-of-the-art and is certainly up to date. It's a, a new system that they have just implemented in the fall of, uh, twenty twenty. It's, uh, almost a, a replica of what we currently have, but with newer technology, uh, based inside.
And it, it can handle expansion in terms of additional staff, if that ever happens?
Through the chair, uh, to Mr. Bradley, yes, that is correct, Mr. Bradley.
Okay, great, thank you.
So my question to the CIO, through the CIO to Mr. Spencer, now, this is a single, single source. Um, uh, bid, single source quote, uh, was there any, um. Attempt to get, uh, a competitive whole quotation?
Um. Through the chair, uh, to the chair, sorry, um, yes, um, I did reach out and, uh, spoke with our, uh, Telus mobility rep. That we, uh, currently use for our, uh, mobile phones, and I was put in contact with a representative out of the, um, the Ottawa office. I had communication with him to indicate that, uh, they weren't able to, uh, submit any bids, uh, in the timeframe that we are looking for. Um, I will say that, uh, Eastern Communication, uh, Southeastern Communication, we have dealt with them for the last twelve years. The current phone system that we have was purchased from them in two eleven and two fourteen respectively. For the town hall and for the, uh, library, or sorry, for the fire hall. And both of those prices are, we're actually paying a cheaper, uh, rate now. For the newer phones than what we did in two thousand eleven, two thousand and fourteen. And our policy on procurement policy states that we do not require three quotes, we just require. If it's under the threshold of twenty thousand, that we just require one written quote, and we, I have that, which you have, uh, in your package this evening.
Okay, so, I know, when you say Telus was unable because of the timeframe, uh, what sort of timeframe did we put on this?
They had three weeks from the first time communicating with, with me until the end.
Telus did?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Okay, are there any other questions, I'm finished with mine, if there are no other questions, I'm about to call a question. If I can find it again, because I know it's here someplace. Uh, those in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and, uh, so now, I'm at item number eight, which is council inquiries, notices of motion. Are there any inquiries here this evening?
You know, I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, we have a, a periodic, we get the bylaw report and so on in our meetings, so. Um, we have. Tunnel Point, you know, has, um, changed over the number of years that I've lived, uh, in the area. And now there's signs on Tunnel Point where private road, and it is private road. But no trespassing and that kind of thing. I think the road is a right of way for people to move about. And to get challenged, that they could be walking on the road, uh, for a bit of exercise. Uh, is not a pleasant experience, so, I'm wondering, like, is. Have we, um, let the bounds of our. Administration of, uh. Aspects like that, uh, get too loose, there's also chickens down there and roosters, there's a rooster. Crow in there, once he gets going, about seven in the morning, he goes to eleven, it's like, don't we have some controls on those, that kind of thing?
Okay, so there's two issues here, you, you're talking Tunnel Point?
Yeah.
So, so the first is the use of the road, and, and being challenged for walking on the road, so it is a, it is a right of way.
Yeah.
Across private property.
I, I understand that.
And so, I mean, I can, I don't know how we can interfere there.
Well, we, we can't, because we don't assume any responsibility for the road, for.
Right.
So, but it seems to me that, uh, you know, uh. It's a bit of a unneighborly approach.
Well, we're fair, finding a fair amount of that these days.
Yeah.
But, and so, the rooster, I don't know what to tell you about, if you've got a BB gun.
No, I'd like to have a, uh, just a nice, uh.
I have a knife.
Yeah, I can help you out, Jack. Well, what I thought I'd do is, I thought.
This is all public, by the way. We're in a public meeting.
I know that, and that's fine, I hope the town knows all about it, uh. I think, and I spoke to councillor Dill about this, because he has chickens, but they're not in the town, they're in his, um, son's barn. I think I should put up a chicken coop, I, we like eggs in our house, and we also like a lot of chicken. So I kind of think, maybe I should put up a chicken coop in my backyard there, looking out at the beach. To the USA and just see whether or not the bylaw people will come around and say, uh, 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 uh.
Well, we went through that one, and chicken coops are illegal in some areas, some places, I don't know what there's. I, I can't remember the details of the bylaw, but they are legal. Anyway, I don't know what we can do with your inquiries, Mr. Bradley, to be honest with you.
I don't, I had a rooster, I saw him.
Anyway, uh, are there any other notices of, or inquiries that we can do something with? Okay, hearing none.
I have one, one, but I think, uh, the proper committee bringing up the Thunder Room shall bring that up next.
Okay, I'll leave that one blank then, okay. Uh, I just have a very brief mayor's report, uh, first of all, to indicate that both Ingredient. And Greenfield, I've spoken both companies, and they both are indicating that if we run a. Summer swim lesson program, they will bring back their five thousand dollar contributions to that program. If we run it, so, I've talked to them and they're on board and waiting to know what our final decision is. Uh, I also indicated at the last meeting that I was working with Ingredient and Giant Tiger. Who had both volunteered to organize, uh, community vaccine clinics. Which would be primarily directed at their plant staff, but open to and welcome to. The entire community in Cardinal and Johnstown and area, Spencerville, Prescott, Johnstown. Now, they made that offer about three weeks ago, it was conveyed to the. Medical Officer of Health in writing by email on April the twenty-sixth. Now, Medical Officer of Health at that time said, oh, well, those plants aren't eligible. But in fact, they were, under phase two, group one. Food processing and distribution networks are eligible. But in any case, over the past three-week period, and despite of the fact that I brought it up twice during our Friday conversations. With, um, the, uh, Medical Officer of Health on the mayor's debriefings. Uh, the Medical Officer of Health has, has not, uh, uh, responded to their. Invitation that they would organize the community clinics. And I had explained to both groups that it would have to be modeled on the Westport model, and in Westport. Uh, the, the requirement was, first of all and foremost, you had to have high-speed. Fiber, internet fiber, broadband fiber, you had to have it at the actual site. Because everything is recorded live as it's done. So they had to do that, and then in addition to that, they had to supply between ten and fifteen volunteers, who would be in charge of. Receiving people, issuing documents, taking, uh, statements from people, giving appointments, et cetera. So both plants were prepared to do all that work. The health unit did not pick up on that, and as of last Friday's meeting with the, uh. Uh, with the minute, uh, Medical Officer of Health and all of the mayors from the county. I confirmed once again on that call from Dr. Stewart. That the health unit would not be operating those types of clinics in places of employment. So I let it drop at the call, because I'm not gonna get into an argument with her on a call, and I'm, and I don't want to embarrass her. But I did later on in the day, send her an email and said, I don't understand why you would not take these companies up on this. She replied to me late Friday afternoon, saying, oh, we do plan to organize a community clinic in Cardinal. Now, this morning, I checked with both companies again, they have both moved on. Uh, Cardinal has, uh, and both of these plants have a single individual that's responsible. For keeping their plants running, in, uh, instituting all the protocols. And making sure that their, that their people get vaccinated when the va, when they're eligible. So both plants have now provided their employees with full access. Here's how you book, here's where you book, if you need help booking, we will book it for you. But go to the provincial website and get yourself a vaccination, you are now, as of last Thursday, I think it is. An eli- eligible food processing distribution, uh, employee. So they have both moved on, and I communicated that to Dr. Stewart this morning. Followed it up with an email to her, and, uh, as well to Doug Malinkin, the Chair of the Board. Um, I just don't understand why it wouldn't have been more efficient to organize a clinic for the employees. Right in their workplace, than to send them scattering hither and yon, all through Eastern Ontario to get their vaccinations. And as of Thursday this week, all retail employees become eligible. And that means that even right down to the Tim Hortons kids and the, and the McDonald's kids. Those kids are also eligible for, uh, vaccinations, and they can go on the site and get registered as well. So there's gonna be a tremendous number of people, uh, blocking up that booking system, starting on Thursday morning.
Are they firing people if they don't, uh, get vaccinated?
No, as a matter of fact, and, and this is a very interesting thing, because now, we're learning that even at, uh, Mapleview Lodge. In, uh, Athens, the number is something like sixty-one percent have had their. Two do, first dose, and something like forty percent have had their first and second. But there's still a group of about forty percent that haven't had either dose, and that is not just. All the residents seem to have had first and some, most have had second, but the PSW workers and the nurses. And the food people that work with them are only at about sixty percent of the, of first dose rate.
But they're making it mandatory, right?
No, that, and, and the province, and the minister, and even the prime, the premier. Have, have wrestled with this issue of whether it'll become mandatory, and they've all backed away from making it a mandatory vaccination. But I think we're rapidly getting to the point where if you can't show a document that says you've been vaccinated. You're not gonna be able to get on an airplane, you're not gonna be able to do this or that or the other thing. I think that that's rapidly coming, although, you know, it's, they're not, they won't. I think that that's rapidly coming, although, you know, it's, they're not, they won't use the word vaccination passport, but, uh, I'm, I'm, but anyway, I'm just reporting. I don't want to speculate. And the last thing I want to report just quickly is that the sixty-six acres of Fairnruver land, located on the northwest side of Frederick Street, uh, there was a deal that closed on that on Thursday last week. Uh, I don't know who the buyer was, but I know that Wendy, our, uh, community development coordinator, has been talking to some, uh, interested parties, whether it was those interested parties that actually closed the deal or not, I don't know. And the one thing I'm signaling, and the reason I wanted to bring this up during my report tonight, is that we had signaled as a council that we would sell our road allowances to a previous proponent on those lands. But we made it very clear that we wouldn't sell those road allowances until after he had closed that deal, and we knew what he was going to do with the land. So here we have, the, the land has been sold to, uh, to a, to a, a new owner, but we don't have any kind of a proposal from that new owner. So I would hope that, you know, council would not, and that staff would not enter into any agreements to sell our road allowances until we know exactly what the proposal is here.
I wonder if the buyer knows that there's road allowances there?
Well, and I don't, I know that the buyer that Wendy has been dealing with probably knows that, but again, I don't know who the buyer is, whether it's the party that she's been dealing with or somebody else. I don't know. Okay, so that's my report. I'm moving on to item number ten, which is the question period, so. I'll just say to the clerk, have there been any questions phoned in from the public or any other sources? Do we have the press here tonight?
Um, we have not received any questions. Um, the press did request information and a link last week, uh, which I provided to the media. However, it doesn't appear that, uh, the person is, is on tonight. Looks like they didn't log in.
Okay, thank you very much. So no questions. Now, we do have a closed session, and does someone have the motion to move to the closed session?
We're going to adjourn with every word this afternoon, committee proceeding, closed session, eight oh three, in order to address matters pertaining to section two thirty-nine, two C, the code of retention of the land by the municipal or local board. So the edge of the land bank, John Smart County, first session, April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, calling the question, turning on the motion to go into closed session. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Now, I, I would just like two minutes to get a drink, and then I'll be right back.
As I said, the closed meeting, the committee does now adjourn, the whole committee does now adjourn with eight thirty-eight. Yeah. Okay.
Eight thirty-eight, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And so now, reporting out from the closed session, deputy mayor has the motion to bring forward regarding the minutes of April the twelfth.
Uh, thank you. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by councillor John Hunter, that the committee receives and approves the closed session, and it's dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion is carried. And so we're reporting out further out from the closed session, but council met in closed session to discuss uh, our ongoing discussions with infrastructure Ontario, and, uh, develop some strategy around the method to proceed. And, uh, that concludes the reporting out from the closed session. Chair's looking for the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hunter, that the committee now does adjourn at eight thirty-nine P M.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.